So how many?
Terms altogether would he serve? I know he's already served a.
Well, if he's reappointed tonight, he'll have served a partial term and he'll be appointed for a full term. And then it'll be up to him and the council at that time whether he serves a second full term.
Okay, what is the term? Is that four years or two years?
It is six years.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, sure. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion of second from Mr. Bernard Hill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and we will carry that forth and appoint him later on in the agenda. Building naming discussion, Mr. Griswold.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This council is in a very unique position, a very fortunate position in fact, to have several capital programs going to be coming online during our tenure. Things such as the extensions to the recreation center, the parks and recreation facilities that are outlined in the master plans, some future swimming pools, perhaps the public safety building and various things internal to the public safety building that may warrant that the city just names them individually. The, that's right, Boykin extensions as well. Right now, we currently have no process in place, so rather than debate that each and every time we consider a new facility as far as what we want to call it in the future, I thought that it'd be appropriate for us to establish some procedures. And so with the council's concurrence, I would ask that we direct the staff to draft a process and procedure policy so that we can handle these in the future when the great opportunities come forward.
Kelly, what would be some of the points that you would want to include in a procedure? What would be some of the objectives you would have?
I think the objective should be people or families that have long-term contributions to the city. And in the case of individuals, I think we would have to carefully consider whether we want living persons or deceased persons to be honored. Obviously, there'd be some kind of thing such as public safety. Obviously, we would have some living persons who definitely would warrant having contributed to the point where bodily injury and harm and whatnot, perhaps even, you know, death in the past, that would warrant consideration. I think because of the long-term implications of any decision that we make, that it should be more than a simple majority. But again, I think all of these types of things are things that the city managers and staff can come up with and we can discuss the particulars of it when the time comes. I did take the opportunity to forward another city's policies on naming of structures and facilities to Mr. Bustin as a potential starting point.
Any questions or comments from the rest of the council?
Well, I personally, just from experience and seeing what our buildings are named and who they're named after, have no objection to how our buildings have been named in the past. And those all do require city council approval. And I'm just, personally, I don't think we need to instruct staff to take time to go through a process and hem ourselves into a procedure that may not come up with the best and most, I guess, best person or thing to be named after. So I personally don't think we should instruct staff to waste city resources and time when nothing in the past has happened that brings us to this conversation that I'm aware of that has been bad in the past. So I mean, I think we've been rocking along pretty well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Whitten. Anyone else from the council?
Yeah, being new to this process, one year on the council, I haven't been privy to the process at all. Is it something that somebody could provide us an explanation of how it's occurred in the past?
Well, this is my seventh year being up here and I haven't been privy to it either because it hasn't happened in my turn. Jim, do you have a historical perspective of how these things have been named in the past that you could share with us?
For the most part, they've either been, and as you said, we've had very few. So they are very rare and the previous councils have taken it very seriously when they're naming a facility after someone. But it is, it has been either a member of the council who has, or several members of the council who have come forward with a recommendation, or it's been a citizens group who has come forward with a recommendation to the council. And the council then decides if it's appropriate to do so or not. But as you said, it's been very rare.
And when the council has participated, I presume they've had a discussion at a meeting and then they've taken a vote as a resolution?
Right, there would have to be officially an action made by the council.
Sure, sure.
Have those recommendations that they've made in the past, does it land with anything that Mr. Griswold suggested? I'm like, Bob, we don't know what the procedures are. I mean, what are they recommending? How are they going about it?
It would just be someone who felt that a certain individual was worthy of recognition by having their name associated with facilities. So in our case, Mr. Frank Brown was the council, or named Frank Brown Recreation Center after Mr. Brown. Jan Dempsey Community Arts Center was named after Mayor Jan Dempsey. This complex we're in right here, the Douglas J. Watson Municipal Complex was named after a long-sitting city manager. We've had a baseball field named after someone who worked in Parks and Recreation for an extended period of time. We may have had one or two more, but like I said, maybe a handful of times in the last 23 years that I've been here that we've had naming. So it's very rare and the procedure has always been very simple. Like I said, either a council member or a group of council members come up with an idea or a citizens group does. And they present that to the council, the council deliberates, they vote, and either yes or no.
And Jim, is it fair to say that in the inverse, that if we wanted to rename a building, it would be the same procedure with basically?
Yes.
Council could consider and then based on our political philosophy of a majority making the determination? And Mr. Griswold had mentioned a supermajority potentially. Do we have any other requirements in voting that had such a heightened burden?
There really is no law that we have about naming buildings. So I guess you could come up with your own. We have nothing else except for ordinances that require, well, that require at least six members to vote for it, no matter how many members are at the meeting. So that's about the only policy I know about voting that we have that's different than just a regular majority.
Is it common to, for other cities comparable to us, to have some type of formalized procedure with this matter?
I don't know. I'm sure some cities do, I'm sure some cities don't. Again, maybe those who name things for people quite regularly might have a formal procedure to follow. In our case, we very seldom do that. Now, if this council wanted to become more active in naming things, maybe, you know, then it would be a good idea to have a formal policy.
Any other thoughts from the council? Any questions?
Mayor, if I may, one more time.
Sure.
And this is strictly, we're discussing buildings.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
We're discussing only buildings.
That's exactly right.
Or internal structures.
Or internal structures, meaning?
Meaning rooms within buildings.
City council chambers.
Yep.
I might add, we do have a caveat here. We do get things donated to us every once in a while, like the Deneas property, like Kiesel Park. Those come with a requirement that we name that facility after the donor, and that is part of the agreement. But even that has to come to council for council's approval. You can approve accepting the donation with the conditions that are set, or you can not accept the donation. So even that has to come to council.
Seems like we already have a procedure in place.
I'm sorry?
Seems like we already have a procedure in place to do this.
It's been an informal procedure, yes.
Have there been any problems with?
Not that I know of.
Again, I, may I?
Sure, go right ahead.
Again, I think we have, this is a unique situation, like I started this conversation, in that we have a number of facilities coming online in a short period of time, a number of, couple of years or so. So it's a, it's a good problem to have, and it's a unique opportunity for us to formalize those procedures, as have some other cities of our size.
And I support a robust debate on each one when we decide to name one. If a group comes in, when a majority would make that decision, so I'd support that. It's important.
Anybody else?
I don't see any harm in looking at what other cities our size do. I can't hear nothing to look at. Just so we know.
What was the other community, Kelly, that you sent the information in on? What was that?
I'd have to go back and check the emails. I just did a quick search on Google and numerous ones popped up. I sent Jim one as a potential example of where to start.
This is something I've looked into as well, and I can, I can find information out on that. There's a mayor that I keep in touch with in Virginia and they have a policy in place that I think is very good.
At this point in time, I, from where I sit, I have no imminent nomination of a person in this community to name a building on for in the very near future. I think that's very important for the audience to understand that. Mr. Griswold and I have had a debate through email this week about the living and deceased. I believe that if people are alive and they're worth honoring, that we should honor them and we shouldn't wait for them to pass on to do that, that they should enjoy that honor, their family should enjoy that with them. And if they're, if they're, if we feel so strong that we're going to put their name on a building, we shouldn't wait for them to be gone to make that determination. This council and its past councils have done a beautiful job of naming things for people who have been great servants to this community. One of those people is in the audience tonight. And all of those were very well put-together decisions. I wasn't around for any of those discussions, but my guess is that the council had very robust discussions about those determinations before they hauled off and permanently named a building for any of those people. That's worked. If we're going to consider naming a building for somebody and represent this entire community, we better be doggone sure we're right about it, we feel comfortable about it. And really, in a perfect world, it'd be great if the entire council felt like it was the right thing to do. And I believe all of those situations, my guess would be, I can't promise you this, and we could go in the records and look into it, but I would guess that all of those were unanimous determinations when those buildings were named for those people. With that being said, I feel like our process is good. We could, if somebody feels strong enough to name something for somebody, that they can bring it up to this council, we can have a discussion about it and we can make a determination about it. To me, that policy is good and it's in place. I don't see the need for the staff to go and do the research on this because I feel like we've got a respectful, good policy in place that's going to account for all of our citizens and account for the people that we're talking about honoring, and is going to give everybody up here a chance to speak to it, up or down. So that's where I'm coming from. I certainly respect all the opinions of everybody up here tonight. And at this point in time, we'll just ask the council if you would like to charge the staff with doing some research and developing some criteria to have a building naming policy for the city of Auburn. Is that, that's a mouthful, but is that kind of what we're looking for? Ladies and gentlemen, does that sound right? To instruct the staff to do the research, to potentially create a policy that we would vote on, that would be a building naming policy that would be for the city of Auburn.
I'm about to lie of research because I'm not for asking them to do.
I don't know what'll, I don't know how much time it would take to do this.
What I'm talking about is just seeing what other cities do. And.
That's going to take somebody some time to do it. I don't know if that's an hour or two hours or three hours, but.
All I'm talking about is everybody sitting at home and Google it.
Well, we don't need instruction for that, Tommy.
Take about 15 minutes. It makes more sense to ask these folks to do it.
Well, the procedures we work with, I appreciate you, Tommy. You always bring levity to our meetings and I'm grateful for that. The procedures that we work under is asking the staff to take staff time to create things for us to debate and vote on. And so that's what, that's what we're doing here tonight, is we're having a discussion about whether we would like to instruct the staff to do that.
I think we have an incredibly talented staff and I don't anticipate this type of research to take forever. I think it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward type of work and I'd be all for it.
All right, so if you would like for the staff to do the research, to create potentially a policy, and some discussion points for us on creating a policy for naming buildings and municipal buildings, municipal properties within the city of Auburn, please raise your hand. Just one, two, three, four, all right? That'll be four, so I presume. If you wouldn't, if you do not want the staff to take time to do that research, please raise your hand.
I'll do my own.
Okay, so that's five, okay.
Get back to go and talk about it.
Absolutely. If everybody wants to do their own research and come back and bring this up again, then I'm certainly willing to talk about that. All right, any questions on the agenda for the city manager? City manager, Mr. City Manager, do you have any questions for us or corrections?
Sir, we do have one correction on the regular agenda. Mr. Lockhart will not be here to receive his service award for 15 years of service.
I hope everything's all right with Mr. Lockhart and we'll get that to him later. Okay. All right, so any questions? Do I have a move to adjourn?
Some moves.
All right.
All right, this time we'll open up the city council meeting for January the 7th, 2020. Roll call, Valerie.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, being the first meeting of the month, it's our opportunity to recognize those employees who have done an outstanding job on behalf of you, the citizens. And so tonight, we're very proud to recognize Ms. Valerie Baker. And this is a memo from Megan McGowan Crouch, Assistant City Manager to Jim Bustin, the City Manager. Valerie, would you please join me up here? Long walk for you. It is my honor and privilege to nominate Valerie Baker as Employee of the Month for January 2020. Valerie was hired as an Administrative Secretary in the Office of the City Manager in October of 2017. She is the first person at City Hall that greets and interacts with visitors and is a shining example of an employee who is committed to providing quality work and service to our citizens, staff, and elected officials. Beyond greeting and assisting citizens and visitors, Valerie's job duties include, but are not limited to, compiling and distributing city council packets, assisting with voter registration in city elections, scanning and filing of ordinances and resolutions, publishing and distributing updates to the city code, managing scheduling requests for the mayor, that's a tough job, and general administrative duties for the Office of the City Manager and City Council. She displays a high level of professionalism, attention to detail, and pride in the work that she performs. Valerie consistently and efficiently performs the duties of her job while always willing to take on new tasks. Recently, Valerie volunteered to be cross-trained to fill in for the Assistant City Clerk when needed. Cross-training included observing city council meetings, becoming familiar with roll call forms and other council meeting paperwork, formulating a city council agenda, reviewing the council minutes, and learning other daily duties of that position. Valerie is an employee that not only completes her assigned task and duties in a timely manner, but one that anticipates additional tasks and takes the initiative to complete those tasks without being asked. She is also willing to provide unsolicited valuable input and feedback to current processes and procedures that make them more user-friendly and efficient. Valerie takes her role in public service to heart with results that demonstrate the depth of her commitment. For these reasons, I highly recommend Valerie to be recognized as the City of Auburn Employee of the Month for January 2020. How are you doing tonight? Good to have you. This is a memo from Mr. Al Davis, Community Services Director, through Scott Cummins, Development Services Executive Director to the City Manager, Jim Bustin. Please accept this nomination of Housing and Community Development Coordinator, Ashley Simpson, for an achievement award. Ashley joined the city in 2006, July of 2006, and continues to be a valuable member of the community services team. Ashley is very passionate about her job and people, and the people she serves through the Community Development Block Grant Program as she works with sub-recipients, homeowners, contractors, and other city staff. Ashley routinely proposes and implements more effective means to perform the functions of Auburn's CDBG program. In doing so, Ashley demonstrates a thorough knowledge of the requirements of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for managing and distributing the CDBG appropriations we receive. Over the past four years, with the support from the city's Educational Assistance Program, Ashley continued her value-added service while completing the work required to earn a Bachelor of Science degree in management from the University of Phoenix. Ashley's efforts in balancing her duties with the city's CDBG program while pursuing this personal goal to receive a college degree is a great example of the quality staff the city employs, is a great example of the quality staff the city employs to assure continued success for now and in the future. Earning her bachelor's degree is a major professional and academic accomplishment for Ashley and for the city of Auburn, and thus we are honored to nominate Ashley for an achievement award. Okay, for the 32nd consecutive year, if I could have Allison Edge and your staff, if they're here, to please come forward. Y'all doing good? Glad to have you. The City of Auburn, Alabama was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition for excellence in state and local government financial reporting. In order to be awarded a certificate of achievement, a government must publish an easily readable and efficiently organized comprehensive annual financial report. This report must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles and applicable legal requirements. The Government Finance Officers Association established their certificate program in 1945, which is now recognized by financial institutions and rating agencies as the standard for external governmental reporting. This is the 32nd year the City of Auburn has received this designation. The Finance Department, along with auditors and other participating city staff, should be recognized for their dedication and effort into perfecting the document year after year. This continued achievement confirms that the City of Auburn's commitment to excellence in financial reporting and accountability to you, our public. Congratulations and thank y'all. Thank y'all for everything. Y'all do a great job on behalf of all of us. Okay, we have a very special announcement we'd like to make right now, and if I could have Ms. Martha Hink from the Food Bank and Mr. Paul Gresham, Chairman of the Board of the Food Bank, please step forward. As an introduction, during the fall, we received some information at the city from an organization called the Extra Mile Organization. And it's a national organization that encourages municipalities to recognize outstanding individuals in their community that are going the extra mile to make your community special, to make it unique, to make it great. And so after a brief discussion, because it only took a brief discussion, we determined that we did have some Extra Mile people in our community, and we felt like in the first year formally recognizing that, that we'd like to recognize Ms. Martha Hink, who has done a beautiful job at our food bank. So during their December board meeting, I went out and read a proclamation that I'd like to read for you today, and then Mr. Gresham has something he'd also like to do from their board. Whereas Martha Hink grew up in the Congo, the daughter of Presbyterian missionaries where a heart for service was lived every day, and where she first served as the Director of the Presbyterian Community Ministry, a longtime organization providing assistance to the needy in this area. And whereas in 1994, very wise people chose Martha to become a Director of the Food Bank of East Alabama. And she has led this agency to great success. The Food Bank has grown from serving 45 agencies to serving some 250 agencies throughout East Alabama. And whereas it has grown from distributing 450,000 pounds of food in 1994 to distributing 5 million pounds of food in 2018. Much of this good work is due to Martha's public reputation for integrity, efficiency, and excellent decision-making. Whereas all of Martha's effort to feed the hungry in East Alabama are done with commitment, conviction, and most of all, compassion. Whereas Martha is a community hero that goes the extra mile. Now therefore, I, Ryan Anders, the Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 11th, 2019, to be Martha Hink Day in the city of Auburn. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. At the same day, we had a little more business we had to take care of for Martha. And, but before I get into that, I want to say thank you to the city and to the mayor and for having us here and for honoring Martha. I want to really thank you for, if most of you know, we're moving into a new building. We're going from a building that has about 13,000 feet of storage space to a building of about 40,000 feet. And, and that's going to be tremendous for the food bank. Well, I certainly would like to thank those on the IDB Board and in particular Philip Dunlap and Art Shipman and all those that have worked so good with us to make this happen. But that's not why I'm here tonight, I'm here to read this resolution. The same board meeting, we, the board unanimously passed a resolution and I'd like to read the resolution to you. Whereas the Food Bank of East Alabama has grown significantly since its inception in 1994 to the point where it now serves thousands of residents in East Alabama that are food insecure, and whereas the Food Bank's mission is to feed hungry people, reduce food waste, and raise public awareness of issues related to food and hunger. And whereas during this past year, the Food Bank distributed over 4.5 million pounds of food through food pantries, community markets, shelters for the homeless, special residential facilities, after-school programs, low-income daycare programs, and shelters for abused women. And whereas the Food Bank of East Alabama has developed a reputation as a highly efficient, effective, and trustworthy organization, as evidenced by the thousands of volunteers and financial backers that believe in the Food Bank's mission. And whereas the success and esteem of the Food Bank can largely be attributed to the dedication and hard work of Executive Director Martha Hink, who has served continuously and faithfully since 1995. And whereas during. And whereas during Martha's 24 years of service, she has created a high profile for the food bank in East Alabama by her tireless efforts to establish extensive relationships for the food bank with countless organizations and individuals. And whereas many of the programs such as community market, brown bag program, and the mobile food pantries that Martha has implemented during her tenure have targeted specific groups that would face hunger otherwise. And whereas because of the food bank's success, it has spent the last year renovating a new facility that gives the food bank more than twice the capacity to serve the thousands of food insecure people in East Alabama. And whereas the Board of Directors of the food bank holds Martha in the highest regard and wishes to honor her for her hard work and good work that has led to the success, successful capital campaign and renovations of the new food bank building. Now therefore, bid resolved by the Board of Directors of the Food Bank of East Alabama that the food bank's new facility located at 365 Industrial Drive in Auburn shall be known as the Martha Hink Food Distribution Center. An appropriate signage will be erected to identify the building as such dated the 11th day of December 2019, signed by myself.
Okay, thank all y'all, and thank you everybody that has served so well for us, our Employee of the Month, and our finance staff, and Ashley, what courage to work full-time and go to school and get your degree. That's awesome. You're an inspiration to all of us, so thank you for what you've done. And thank you, Martha, and to the Food Bank Board. I think, I see here a number of people who, they're on the Food Bank Board, and what y'all do on behalf of this community is unbelievable, and what you've grown to is certainly inspirational as well. And so thank you for your hard work and your continued hard work on behalf of our community. We'll move on right now. During the committee of the whole, we appointed three people to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, Ms. Kimberly White and Frost Rollins, two regular positions on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and Mr. Jim Storeback is the supernumerary. We'll confirm those later in the meeting. For the Waterworks Board, the council voted Mr. Bernard Hill, who served a partial term, to serve a full term. We had a discussion about building, naming buildings, and at this point in time, the council has not asked the staff to work on a policy for us, but Mr. Dawson, Councilman Dawson, has encouraged all council members to be doing their own research. And if there are any good ideas or thoughts that should be brought back to the council, then certainly all of us have the ability to do that at a later meeting. Okay? All right, any other announcements from the council? Anybody? Yes, sir. Mayor, we'll have a Ward Two meeting on the 23rd of January, be at 6 o'clock at the Public Library. Hope to see Ward Two folks there and anybody else that would, would like to attend. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I also have a Ward One meeting on January 14th, which is next Tuesday at the Borckham Community Center at 6:00 PM, and I encourage anyone to, and everyone to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else?
Mayor, I want to thank City Manager Jim Bustin and the staff. I don't know to name the staff individually, because I just have interacted with Jim on the, I know I have a lot of folks in my ward that are happy about the closing at Sagahatchee that rode. I know it's a temporary fix, but I think in long-term, I want to, that was a good, I thought it was good. We got a lot of people that commented on it. We were able to interact and get some good, good results, I hope. But not only that, there's been about, in the last probably three days, three different things I've asked about, where I've had a citizen ask me, and within, at one point, within an hour, but within half a day, there was a remedy or response. And I just don't want to overlook that. I'm very thankful for that. I know the people who I, I get responses back are very thankful for that as well. Jim, I thank you and your staff for just being so responsive and trying to do the best for our citizens. So thank you very much for, for helping me with the issues I've had in my ward.
Okay. Anyone else from the council have an announcement or comment?
I do, I have one more. I want to also thank the Public Service Department for assisting with Watch Night on Highway 14 for those, for that church out there. And I did pass by, and the officer was sitting there, I'd say around 9:00, because I was going to my Watch Night service. And when I came back through, probably about 2:00 or 30:00, so they were still sitting there. So I just want to thank Public Service for their, for the people protecting the community during Watch Night.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bill James for retiring soon, and thank you for everything you've done on behalf of our community and for what a great career you've had here. And congratulations to Paul Register, who will be taking your place. He'll have big shoes to fill, and I know you'll get him ready for doing that, but congratulations. And we look forward to being with you here for the next few weeks as you finish out your time here at Auburn. Okay. All right, at this point in time, is Auburn University Communications. I know school starts back tomorrow. You're here? You slipped in. I didn't see you. Good.
Good evening. I hope all of you had a great holiday break and a good New Year. The only report I have is that students have arrived back in town and will begin classes on Wednesday. Thank you.
Greggle. Yep. We're number five in the country, and that's pretty good, too. All right, at this point in time, is Citizens Communications for items that are on the agenda. Remember, these are only items that are on the agenda that you would like to speak to the council about. Please come forward and give your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes, but these are only items that are on tonight's agenda. I presume that there are people in our audience that would like to speak to us for some things that are not on the agenda. That time will come at the end of the meeting later on, okay? These are just items that are on tonight's agenda that you'd like specifically to talk No one? Okay, we'll move on. City Managers' Communications.
Under City Managers' Communication this evening, our first item of business is a report on the expenditures associated with the Rebuild Alabama Act. By state law, it is required that I give you a detailed description of how we use these funds. As noted in your memo in your packet from City Engineer Allison Frazier, the City of Auburn has not received any funds from the Rebuild Alabama Act, and therefore, we have not spent any funds. However, it is required that in January, I give you the report. And so we do expect that our first receipt of funds will be sometime this month, and so next January, we will have a more detailed report of the funds we receive and how we spend those funds.
Do we need to vote on anything, Jim?
Nope, just that, I just had to give you a report.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
So our next order of business this evening is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I would like to remove 8C4.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to remove 8C3.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Bustin, we'll go in order there, 8C3.
Item 8C3 is a contract with Gonzalez Strength and Associates to provide wayfinding at this facility, including the public safety building, the parks and recreation facilities, and the downtown area. That's for a total contract, all three of those together, total contract of $55,500.
May for approval.
I have a motion in second discussion.
Yes, at our packet meeting, I was under the impression that this would result in us purchasing some signs, but now that I've read the entire package that you delivered on Friday evening, I see this, we get no product for this other than basically a map or locations of where the signs should go and the design of the individual signs. Is that correct?
That is correct. Let me let Becky address that.
That is correct. It would, they would provide us with a template to use for all of the entrance signs and other signage for the parks and recreation facilities. And it would also include the template for all of the wayfinding and signage for the public safety, for the parking lot here on Glen, for Felton Little, and the connections to here and, from those to the Douglas J. Watson complex. And then also some wayfinding for the downtown area.
Okay. So, so the end product of this is a piece of paper and some templates?
It would be, it would be the designs that we could use for all future projects that come online.
All right.
It's additionally, it is some recommendations as to wayfinding in general, how best to, to inform the public of where things are.
Right. So there were some best practices, some consulting as part of this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think that, that more, more in the lines of a Boy Scout Eagle Scout project than it is a $55,000 expenditure from the city. So I intend to vote no on that.
Are there considerations with the American Disability Act when wayfinding?
Yes.
Things of that nature? So this would have to be up to law when they make these recommendations?
Correct. Yes.
So it'd be difficult for the Boy Scout troop to make this determination to be lawful for the city?
I, I can't address that, but yes, it does have to be, it does have to be to, to the specifications of the law.
Right, so it's not just, there's, yeah. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the council? Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Ms. Taylor. All right, motion passes.
Item 8C4 is a memorandum of understanding with Auburn University addressing sidewalk and lane closures related to the construction of the Rain Culinary Science Center.
May for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to make sure that, first, that I think it's great that we are getting ahead of this and having a very comprehensive plan for this, because it's going to be a lengthy process, but the closing of that section of Thatch between Gay and College, correct? Just if you could briefly just walk through a quick timeline, just so that we're aware and that the public understands what that means and, you know, because I know generally we have angst when we start closing streets and sidewalks and...
So we expect this to be, as you said, a lengthy construction process. We've been working with Auburn University to come up with a very detailed street and sidewalk closure timeline based on the work we expect is going to be done. Let me let Scott Cummings, who has worked with Auburn University very closely on this timeline, let me let him give you an explanation on that.
Thank you. Yes, we've definitely worked with Auburn University closely with this. This is definitely something that we felt was very important, and that's why it's been brought to you tonight to make the decision on, on the closure. And due to the need for the closure of Thatch, we've tried to coordinate very carefully for known events we had planned, which included through the Motogro parade, to make sure that would be open in order to facilitate that event. We, you know, one of the key things, even though we would lose traffic flow, vehicular traffic flow through Thatch, we do have pedestrian traffic open on the sidewalk on the north side. That'll be open for the duration of the project, maybe some temporary closures for utility connections. And then obviously, very important to us is maintaining north and south traffic along College Street, and that became very critical to us to be able to negotiate that, so we didn't close that entire intersection down. So it's been a very carefully planned out project. We do appreciate Auburn University facilities working with our engineering staff to facilitate this plan. In your memo, there's some detailed information you can look through that see that there was careful planning to routing not only vehicular traffic, but also pedestrian traffic around this during the time. And the primary objective there is for safety and as convenient as possible as we can make this during this time. Thank you.
Scott, there's some, the parking right there that, that I guess Ingram Hall and Smith Hall access that comes off of Thatch Avenue, and then the Presbyterian Church has a student center right there that has some parking nearby. Do we have provisions for allowing those cars?
One of the things that we stipulated was that the university worked with the Presbyterian Church to secure adequate access to the church during the time of construction. So Thatch will be closed, but it will be open to the local traffic for it to get to the church. The additional parking, as you mentioned, is university parking that will be unavailable during the, during this, through June, July timeframe, and then it will open back after that.
But they're handling that internally with their employees?
They are, yes.
What kind, what plan do we have to make the public aware of the street closure? I know that it probably could affect basketball to some extent, maybe, and then A-Day and different things like that. I got a good mention of concern last time on my ward meeting, but also an idea of potentially reaching out to Alumni Association or something, just making sure people are aware of, because this, I'm assuming a lot of people that travel through our town, whether they live here or outside, are going to be wanting to come through this area.
Well, the university will be facilitating a lot of the communication for that and providing that to us. We'll be sharing that. We'll also be coordinating with them regularly. Our engineering staff, we have inspection staff that'll be involved in this, so we'll have that information. With enough lead time to be able to communicate, you know, any, any of these closures that'll be on, on our public facilities. The university already has display boards that are out in addition to that, but that is a good point on university, on, on the Alumni Association for those coming into town for events.
And I mean, will we do something similar like we did for the Glen work, where we kind of posted something to the city Facebook and?
We will.
Put up a map that kind of showed...
We will. And we also make sure that this information is available, and it's usually picked up by the, the Google mapping thing. So when people use those automated, especially people from out of town that's trying to get to places in town, it will automatically show that that is not a way to go any longer, that it routes them around that way because those areas are closed. And we do that pretty regularly, and it's pretty, we can't guarantee that it's picked up, but it's pretty regularly picked up.
Is something that'd be an open line as well?
Yes. Yeah. And it needs, we, we have plans, as you see in that timeline, we have plans to continually put it out as the plan, as we work that plan.
Thank you.
Jim, just kind of as a redundant refresher, can you kind of communicate to us about the relationship that we have with the university's facilities and project staff and how we meet with them on a continual basis and discussion of this project? Just kind of a summary of that.
As you can imagine, you know, with, with a major university sitting right smack dab in the middle of, of our city, it is important that we coordinate construction projects. So we do meet with facility staff every quarter, and we have a fairly lengthy meeting where we go over everything that we're doing, and as far as projects, utility projects, road projects, construction projects, and they go over with us everything that they're doing and what they're planning. In addition, we have sitting in, in the back of the room here, Mr. Steve Pelham, who comes to those meetings, and he's also coordinates conversations between the city staff and, and university staff. And we have a very close and very, very dynamic conversation pathway. And so the two of us, or the two entities are always speaking, making sure that we each know what each other is doing and, and doing our best to stay out of each other's way, but also doing our best to make sure that we coordinate projects that, in this particular case, there's some utility work that we wanted to get done. We're going to do that, utility upgrade, because the roads are going to be closed anyway, so we're going to do some projects that we had, had planned, but are going to do them in this timeframe. So, and I'm sure they do the same.
Thank you.
Does that include the upgrades at Thatch and Armstrong? Does that include the upgrades at Thatch and Armstrong yet, or Gay, I'm sorry?
No. That'll be later. You know, I'd remind the public, this is a substantial project. It's going to be about two years, I believe, to complete.
For the construction of the Rain Center, we expect that Thatch will be closed, entirely closed throughout four months, and then it'll be open and closed different times.
But I, but I do understand that it'll be a, a great resource for our entire community, even though it's a university facility and going to have university programming in there. I believe that there's going to be some great opportunities for all of our community to have, to experience this facility. So it should be a, a great plus for Auburn, but it is going to be a substantial project. It's going to take a while to get built. Okay. Any other comments from the council? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Those are all the items we have for the consent, off the consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the, the balance of the consent agenda?
One thing real quick, and I, this may not require, but you had mentioned at our pack of meeting, I think the public would like to know, with the acquisition of the 560 new push carts, we're going to be at 85%, correct?
We'll have, we'll have, once we get, once we get those carts in and distribute them to the people who are waiting for them, which will complete our distribution, we will have 85% adoption rate for recycling in Auburn.
All right. I didn't mean to take that out of turn. I just remembered that was a huge deal.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor to approve the balance of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A as an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 13, to make it illegal to trespass in a motor vehicle. A public hearing is required.
Before we begin, Ms. Whitten, would you once again give us a refresher on what we'll be doing tonight?
First, we'll open the public hearing. That's what we do first. And then secondly, we will have someone introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. If that is unanimous and no one denies unanimous consent, then we will then, in essence, waive the first reading and move on to vote on the ordinance, which requires a motion to vote on the ordinance and a second, and then a majority for approval.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council on this subject, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Are there any questions? This is an unusual ordinance. Mr. Buston, would you quickly give us a reason why we're considering this tonight?
I could, but I think our municipal judge is in the room, so...
That'd be great. Well, that'd be even better.
We're going to let him.
Thank you, counsel. We've had a recent rash of, especially one gentleman who likes to get into vehicles with college students and tell them his car is broken down. Could they drive him around the corner, jump his vehicle off? And after several minutes, we're like, there's no vehicle. He's just using them as his own personal Uber, if you will. And he drives them around the city. He never puts his hands on anybody, never threatens anybody, but you've got terrified college students with a gentleman in their car they can't get rid of. And we've been trying to resolve this issue for probably five or six months now. There's no law on the books that makes anything he does illegal, and we think this is a good way to, to fix that loophole, if you will. All the trespass laws in the state of Alabama deal with real property and dwellings. There's probably four or five, I found four or five, I think, states that actually have a law similar to this to try and fix this loophole. And mainly, we're just trying to keep our citizens, especially our college students, safe and, and prevent this from continuing to go on. As a sideline, I think Bill James, the Public Safety Department, will tell you, they also have a lot of people that go around shaking door handles at night and, because people tend to leave their cars unlocked, taking things out of unlocked vehicles. This will give the Public Safety Department another avenue to try and deal with that issue as opposed to having to take it out to the county and make it a felony for breaking and entering. So we think it's a good way to, to stop several problems with, with one new ordinance.
Thank you there, Judge. Appreciate it. All right. Any questions from the council? Comments?
I got a question.
Sure.
So that person, is it the same person, or is it the same person doing the same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
It's the same person.
Been caught down here, and ain't nothing y'all can do about it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, he's been banned from every grocery store and every gas station in the city. And if he trespasses on one of those, then I certainly can deal with him and put him in the county jail. But as long as he's continuing to go through this same process of getting in a vehicle, basically, they, they open the car door and he gets in the vehicle with them, and at that point, he hasn't broken any law that's on the books. And as long as he doesn't put his hands on them or threaten them, he hasn't broken the law. So this will stop him from intimidating physically or otherwise these students, and will give us a way to redress this and hopefully stop him from doing it. But it is the same individual.
How did y'all come up with the fine or punishment? Is that just a state thing or?
There is no state law. I'm sorry. There is no state law. That was a decision that was made between myself and the public, excuse me, the city attorney. It, it's pretty much the standard punishment for any ordinance violation, which is up to a $500 fine and up to six months in the county jail. But that is pretty much standard across the board for an ordinance violation.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Any comments from the council? So we have a motion and a second, so roll call.
Yep. We, we don't, we don't have a motion and a second yet.
We don't?
No, we just, we just agree unanimous consent.
Mayor, I, I think what we should do is, instead of asking, does anyone have a problem, or does anyone deny unanimous consent? We should just go ahead and take a vote for unanimous consent, a roll call vote for unanimous consent.
Okay.
So we didn't do that, so we should do that.
Okay. So we need to take a roll, you're suggesting we take a roll call?
For, for, no one did deny unanimous consent, but...
All right.
We, what we have been doing is voting on that now, so let's go ahead. Instead of just asking if anyone denies unanimous consent, let's go ahead and vote on that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. By roll call.
I roll call.
Okay.
Yes.
Am I voting to deny unanimous consent?
No.
For unanimous consent.
You're voting for unanimous consent. You're voting to move this forward tonight. You're voting to, basically to suspend second reading, so...
There we go. That's what I was looking for. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And now we would entertain a, a motion and a second, and then another vote.
Move to approve. Second. We do have a motion and a second, and this would be just a voice vote?
No, it'd still be a roll call.
It'll be a roll call. All right. We do have a motion and a second. All right. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mayor, those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
All right. At this point in time, it's an opportunity for citizens' open forum. This is an opportunity for you to address the council about anything that might be on your mind. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to do that. Yes, sir.
Free from my name and address? Robert Brennan at 241 Jerome Court, Auburn, Alabama. And I have a group of people over here who are all with me, and they may individually speak as well. So the sudden closing of the Health Plus Fitness Center is the issue. We'd like to bring it to your attention because it's a wellness and a health center for our citizens. We understand that the, the hospital has the right to close this facility, and we understand that you don't control whether or not they close this facility. That's obvious. I don't think everyone was aware that this is the only indoor, large heated pool to 85 degrees in the city of Auburn. Because it's been suggested to us that, well, it's closed, just run over to Opalika. Well, it's closed, just go to the Auburn University Community Pool. Neither one are kept at 85 degrees. Now, why is this important? You can see some of the people here, but I'll just tell you that we have people that have ALS, we have an amputee, we have people that have severe arthritis, we have babies that are learning to flip over and not drown in this warm water. This is a real plus for retirement community that we think is first class. We love Auburn. We think Auburn needs this pool. So what can we do? I think there's an easy solution that maybe has been overlooked. Why don't we have the city of Auburn lease the pool area only from the hospital? And then Auburn does a lease that's perhaps month by month. So if you hit an extraordinary expense, you cancel the lease. So you're not going to get hung with anything unusual. On the other hand, at the same time, we would like for the Parks and Rec to build an indoor facility similar to what Opalika has, but have it kept at 85 degrees so that it can be used by all of these citizens that need the warm water. This is, it's a crime to have a pool already built, still working, and to say, fill it up with concrete, when you've got all these people that basically have nowhere to go. They're going to have to go over to Opalika, and we don't want to drive to Opalika. We would rather stay right here in Auburn. So we're first class, we'd like to stay first class. I'd be glad to help in any way. I've not spoken to anyone at the hospital. I have no idea if they would listen to this, but surely they don't have enough doctors already hired to fill up that building and that facility that they need the pool right this moment. And as a fallback, if you can't do that, please, please, please rush an indoor pool for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Happy New Year, Mayor Andrews. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, Herbert Walter Dinbar Jr., 412 Opalika Road, Apartment 111. My comments tonight are concerns that the, the city in 2020, with the comprehensive 2030 plans that in, in place right now, to work to keep the basic infrastructure needs of Auburn, particularly in places like Northwest Auburn. And I'm sure the people in Northwest Auburn like to thank you for the improvements of the past, but you have heard many of them speak on issues like affordable housing, how the CDBG money's being spent, about the need for a library branch, the situation involving Drake Middle School, the new one, and what's going to happen to the old one, and plus the normal stuff like streets, roads, making sure no places get flooded out in cases of weather, and stuff like that. I'm just hoping that as a general rule, at least make sure that our basic infrastructure is fixed, because you know, a lot of projects are going on. But if the basic infrastructure is not good, everything's going to crumble, literally and figuratively. And I'm sure all of us in Auburn don't want that, and that's the major concern that I have. And I thank y'all very much, and happy new year.
Who would be next?
Good evening. Carolyn Matthews, 622 Ogletree Road. I'd like to address the pool issue too. I think, as Bob said, we're still stunned. It was done so quickly and unexpectedly. And we've been lucky to live in a community that has a university, and a lot of the needs of citizens, you know, have been for a, a pool, have been met by the university, and then Health Plus has met those needs. A wonderful facility, a beautiful pool used by many people. Now we're being told that our desire to use the water for exercise or physical therapy or whatever, we have to go to Opalika. And it's a wonderful facility too. Sportsplex is. For some, the distance is a problem. Again, the pool temperature is a problem, especially since we have so many elderly arthritis. I had to quit going to the pool for a few weeks in December. It got too cold. I've been sick. I looked into the offerings of the pool in Opalika, and they're so restricted compared to what we're getting. There, there are five classes, all at nine o'clock, the same class. We have 13 classes that address a variety of fitness levels, from people with arthritis, seniors, people who want more, a more strenuous type of exercise. We have people doing physical therapy. Like I said, we have 13 classes at a variety of times of day. So we, we just wouldn't get that. And I think Auburn has done an excellent job in providing recreational facilities in most every area. I was on the council when we built the tennis center, the soccer complex. I think the one area that we have failed is in a pool for the citizens, particularly a covered heated pool that can be used year round. At the most, as Bob said, the most we would like was some kind of meeting with EAMC to see if it could be kept open during an interim period. At the, at least, and I understand long range plans, how important they are, goals, but that the priority of a pool be moved up, because there are many, many citizens that use, and I think we need to stop relying on other people to meet these needs of Auburn citizens. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there any way that we could speak or get some information on, you know, maybe doing a lease with Health Plus? They have in the past, I know that they lease space for the Exceptional Foundation. I, I do believe that that is a, that is a need for a group of people there. I, I used to work out at Health Plus a long time ago. It's a wonderful facility. I know that they're changing, they're moving that space, but I think that there is a huge need for people in our community with a swimming pool. And I, I think it would be worth our time looking into, seeing if we can talk to EAMC and, and have a lease agreement.
I can answer that question. Yes, we can ask that question. There's no, I mean, we can ask that question in the morning. I've understood that they've made plans, but that doesn't mean that we can't ask them to, to stop those plans and, and rethink what they're wanting to do. Jim, I don't know, has anybody on the staff seen their renovations of the building? Did we know? Has anybody talked to us about that? We have no idea what that would be. I've not seen it as well.
I will say, Mayor, that we do have plans for an indoor pool at Boykin Community Center. We intend to fast track that as soon as we can find some land to, and we are actively looking. As you know, it's in the budget for us to get some land to move Public Works and Environmental Services off that property. And we would come back to you with, with an, a plan to move that, that pool to the forefront as soon as we can, we can get it started. But that also helps us with the Branch Library that we have planned for there. It also helps us with the Rosa Parks Museum that Councilman Dawson had brought up.
Sure. Are there any other citizens who would like to address this on this, address this on this issue? Please.
Thank you. My name is Slaton Crawford. I'm a member of Health Plus, have been for a couple of years, and I just wanted to say that it's a first-class facility. It's being closed. We've heard all of the details. But I wanted to add one thing. Sometimes in communities, I'm a former hospital CEO, that there are facilities and services that only can be provided by a public institution or motherhouse, evidence this facility was built by the hospital. It's big enough, it's accredited. An accredited facility, everything under the umbrella of an accredited facility has to be accredited to the same manner. Therefore, that's the reason it's such a great facility. It's clean, it's well-run, and it provides a service. The heated saltwater pool, there's another one around. There's not another one around. I understand the one in Opalika is a cold water pool. The health benefits of a saltwater pool for exercise, cardio exercise, and multiple types of ailments that it benefits is, is necessary. But the point I wanted to make is a public institution, a large public institution that is able to subsidize its... is able to subsidize if necessary, is required to have something of that size in a community. Private enterprise is not going to provide it. And it has to be subsidized like an ambulance service or anything of that sort. I just wanted to bring that point for whatever it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Now, I want to ask a question, too.
Mr. Crawford, hold on just one second. What was your address, Mr. Crawford?
Thank you. We just need that for a minute. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Sorry to, sorry Connie. Please go ahead.
That's okay. I guess my question is, and I understand that there's an indoor pool coming to the Boykin area over there, but is it the type of pool that's going to accommodate their needs? Because I was understanding if it's just going to be a regular pool, but is it going to be designed to accommodate what they're asking, like the heat part of it?
I'm not sure what the requirements would be. You know, we're not a health facility, so if there were to be some type of therapeutic program, we would have to know what those requirements are, and then it would be a decision of the council at the time to decide if you wanted to expend the money to, whatever that is, to make that addition. Now, we expect it to be a full-service aquatic facility. What that means, I don't know. Like I said, we never contemplated a health facility, but that's not, doesn't mean you can't contemplate that.
So, Jim, basically, what we've said is, we see having an indoor pool at that site, but we've not decided if it's going to be a pool for competition, a pool for therapy, a pool for lessons, a pool for casual swim, or something all above. We just think that there, we just believe our commitment, our goal is to have an indoor pool with that.
There's a general plan from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan of what to pull there, make it a full-blown aquatic center, more akin to what's in Opelika. But again, I can't, I can't talk to the therapeutic pool needs because I don't know what those are. But again, if there's, you know, if that would be something that the council would want to pursue when we come up to design, if there's a, you know, a separate, as I heard one of the gentlemen say, a saltwater pool that has to be heated to 85 degrees, what the size of that is. I guess I understand if I, from what little I know about what happens at Health Plus, it would have to be some type of shallow pool where you can actually, you're not swimming, but you're actually standing and doing aerobics or whatever, water aerobics type thing.
Right.
And I only asked the question because it was thrown out there about that pool from Boykin on their conversation. So, you know, I don't want to send false hope that that's what, you know, that pool is built for. So, that's why I'm asking the question because it never came up, I guess. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be a council member that says that this is going to happen, but then, at the end of the day, that's not, that's not the reason that it happened, to accommodate the needs of what y'all are asking for.
So, let me ask you this, to get the city to talk to EAMC maybe tomorrow or sometime this week, is that something that we need to vote on? Or is it something that they can do and report back to us, and then that gets?
That doesn't take any council action to do that, does it?
Okay. We can do that. How soon would we get the information back on if that's something that the hospital would be willing to do?
Stephen, it'd be a little ambitious for me to suggest when they might give an answer. It could be immediately, or it could be they might have to have, I don't know. I wouldn't want to be suggestive.
That makes sense.
It should be. They have never approached us with any plan at all. They have had plans for that facility. When I did reach out to the CEO of the hospital, I was told that they were closing that facility because it was not, they had lost a lot of their
Membership.
Membership, and that they were closing it because it wasn't economically viable to keep it open. That they are going to open a, something in Auburn Mall, it's not going to be a pool, but it's going to be something with some type of health facility in the Auburn Mall.
What I'm asking is, I would like to see the pool stay open if possible, if we could get a lease agreement like Bob suggested. I think that
I think we would, we could talk to them. Any expenditure of money would have to come back to council. I mean, staff cannot make that decision, and the council would have to decide. They would probably have to decide from their board members if they were even care to entertain that idea. I don't know.
I think it's worth looking into.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Susan Sullivan, and I live at 1980 Canary Drive here in Auburn. Many small things have been spoken about tonight regarding the pool at Health Plus. Just for your knowledge, we're not talking about just fitness here. We're talking about lives of children in our communities. I've been a member at Health Plus for 10 years plus, and children are learning all the time how to not die if they fall in the water. We can't put a price tag on that. Okay? Another thing is, yes, the pool is a pool that has been built to be approximately four foot deep so that we have swimmers who can do lap swimming. And between it being a shallow pool all the way across the pool and not having a depth of more than four feet, it allows for a large area for us to do different kinds of programs in the water. So, we have a lot of health benefits from that. We do have people that are there that, it's already been spoken of, where they are having physical therapy in the water. Auburn residents deserve a place to go to that is safe, that they can get the physical therapy they need to sustain their lives. So, it's not just a matter of, oh, we're going to go, and we're going to have fun, and we're going to feel good. It's a matter of life and death for some of us. Okay? For myself, I've been going faithfully for the last year. I've taken off a considerable amount of weight, and I have been able to get off all of my diabetic medications. I feel like that's huge. I would rather spend my $1,000 a month supporting my Auburn community than just paying for my medications to survive. So, yes, I'm being a diabetes advocate here, and that's just one of many, many things that people deal with. So, in the progress of building a pool, I hope those kinds of things will be taken into consideration. You don't have to have a pool that's deep to get the benefits that we need, but we need, we need heat for people that have, like, fibromyalgia. Babies are not going to want to get in water that is cold. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Gilbert Rivera. I live at 2225 Mount Vernon Lane here in Auburn. I've been going there for 20 years. My wife's been a head instructor there for 20 years, you know? Couldn't these people at the city here think about something like keeping it open at least until they build a pool? That's something that needs to be looked at. You know, if they're going to build a pool and everything, that's fine and great. They're going to spend a lot of money at the cities. They could keep this pool open and keep it going, and they wouldn't have to build the pool. You know? What is it, Rehab Works or whatever is going, moving in there into part of the facilities? You know, if they're going to do full rehab and stuff, they're going to need a pool. Because there's a lot of people, they're not here tonight because they can't come here. They're very, in wheelchairs and stuff. But with that pool, has extended their lives by having them get exercise that is very Need you to really think about those things.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sarah Orgel, 1629 Overhill Court here in Auburn. My husband is an extreme. He has ALS, and it's the slow progressing kind. And this is a true story. We lived here 40 years ago because he coached football. And some of you, I remember from way long time ago, and some of you weren't born yet. But he didn't really not want to move back here eight years ago. But we were in Albany, Georgia, and we had such fond memories of Auburn. And we came for a football game, and it was one of the reunions, and he had such a good time. And we just, I don't know, I insisted that we give it a whirl. And he was very confined to the house, and it was killing all of us to see this happen. And so, before we even looked for a house, I did my homework, and Sally Dean helped me, of course. And we first went to Health Plus, and that was the turning point for Frank because he could see a life for himself, and he could still go to football practice as long as he could, and swim because he can't get on a machine. He's not the only one. I mean, he has to be lifted. But guess what? He's a new man, and he gets in that water, and it changes his whole life. He has been swimming three times a week. Now, he's down to two, for two hours with a therapist. Now, we would be seriously in debt, except that Health Plus has this cooperation with Rehab Works. And for Frank to be able to swim and for us to pay a co-pay, we have to have that, and it has to be a real PT. It can't be a trainer. It has to be the degreed person. So, it's a lifesaver, and I think a lot of people in our community don't even understand that. But we need that so badly. Frank isn't the only one, for heaven's sakes. And I think you are wonderful to consider it. I don't even know who you are, Stephen, but for you to even care that much about us older people and our needs, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Frances Smith. I live at 618 Seminole Street here in Auburn, and I just recently moved here from Jacksonville, Florida. I'm a physical therapist, and I specialize in aquatic therapy. Been doing it for years, years, and years. And I've seen what it does for people's lives, and I was so excited when I came to Auburn and saw that there was a warm-water pool here. So, I went to EAMC. I became a physical therapist there, working for Rehab Works. Just started doing patients, and then wham, you know? So, I know what it does for people. I'd be willing to help anybody. I'm very, I know a lot about pool design. I know a lot about the types of people, the types of temperatures that help certain types of people. And I just think it's a real shame if there's just not a way that you guys can help the hospital. The hospital does great work. They see every kind of patient that needs therapy, and it just became too costly, and I understand it. So, pleading, help them out if you can, because I think it's a unique thing that Auburn has. It's something that should be saved if possible. So, I'd be willing to help with any kind of suggestions or anything. Okay?
Thank you. Welcome to Auburn.
Ken Busby, 280 Ivy Lane. I have no doubt that y'all will be able to help with the pool. Y'all do great work for the city, and you put citizens first in everything you do. So, I look forward to seeing what y'all can do with that. My big thing is, citizen survey's coming out, and whenever I was here a few years, a year ago, we talked about boards and commissions and non-residents being on it. I talked about a survey that I'd put out online, and it wasn't taken that it was a good enough survey because of the way it was done online. And I brought up a suggestion that we add it to the citizen survey, a question about whether or not non-residents should be on boards and commissions. And I think that would be a great question to add to it. It's going out. It's been printed. What's a few, you know, cents on ink for an extra question? And I think it would be important to see what the citizens actually think about that. And, you know, y'all can do with it what you want to whenever it comes back. If you don't want to do anything, that's fine. Either way. But that's kind of my thoughts on that, and that was my thoughts on it then. I just wanted to bring it up as those are getting ready to go out, to have that question added on there. And then for the naming part that Kelly brought up, you know, there's, you know, Mike Hubbard Boulevard that's still got his name on it, and we see how well that went as far as naming things. So, you know, whenever, you know, you think about it, you know, let's put something down on paper and get some things done to where something like that doesn't happen. That's a black eye, a slap in the face to everybody that drives through there. Thousands of people drive by us that every day, and you got a felon's name across the main road that thousands of people see every day. And I would hate to see that happen to another building. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to? Absolutely.
I'm Helga Wilmouth, 1233 East Sanford Avenue, and I, too, want to speak about the pool. I have been a member there since 2001. I am 87 and a half years old. I have two replaced hips, and I'm in the pool six days a week every morning, and can jump around and exercise and walk as much as I want to, which I could not do on land. And I want to tell you that it is four feet high, which makes it easy for people to swim. You can just move over the lane lines, a couple of them, or two, if you need to. And we have Water Zumba, Aqua Zumba. We have Water in Motion. We have a variety of stretch classes for the people with arthritis. I was the German teacher at Auburn High School, and some of you might remember that. But this has been my help, and as you see, I'm strong. I'm 87 years old.
Mr. Jackson, before you come up here, Mr. Parsons had something he wanted to say. Go ahead, Mr. Parsons.
I just wanted to respond to the gentleman, Mr. Busby's questions about the citizen survey and what, and just ask Mr. Buston about what is the general procedure? Where does that content for the questions come from? Does the city council have an opportunity to make suggestions or comments on the content of it?
Once we have put together the survey baseline, there are some, certain questions that we want to ask every year to get a trend line for certain things. But then, yes, you will be getting, before we put it out, you will be getting the base survey to see if there are any questions in there that you don't want to ask, and if there are any questions that the council as a body decides they want to add to it. Now, we have to work with the company to make sure that we ask the questions in such a way that they're not biased in getting an answer one way or the other, and the company helps us with forming the questions. So, if the council says they want to ask a question about X, Y, or Z, we present that to the company, and then they will formulate a question to try to get a statistically valid answer to that question.
Thank you.
But council will have the opportunity. Now, we are limited as well to the, it's a six-page survey, and it has to stay at six pages. So, you know, we can't just ask a So, you know, we can't just ask a ton of questions, but we wanna ask questions that need to be asked for whatever projects or things are on the council's mind that they want to get citizen input from.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up on that?
So if we have citizens that contact us with suggested questions, I understand what you just said. The procedure to add a question to the survey resides up here with the council.
Correct.
And do we have a timeline as to what the cutoff date might be for gathering input for those types of questions so that we don't push the survey down the road somewhere?
We have to have the survey out by the end of January.
Okay.
We are trying to get it out to where we can give it to you, which is almost ready. I will send it out to the council, and then as council members can decide. In the past, we've never had really an issue with, the council members have always been fairly in agreement as to one or two questions that they wanted to ask, and it's been very targeted at certain things. I don't know what this council will do, and I don't know how much time that will take, and I don't know how much controversy there will be. But we would like to get the survey out by the end of January.
And the reason for that, Jim, is because it impacts our budget process, which is this summer, which would begin for the staff.
There are two reasons.
Two reasons.
It impacts the budget. We wanna get it back by the budget, but we also wanna get the survey out when the majority, when students are in session, when the majority of the people are here. We don't wanna do it at a time that we won't have students here. And this is a perfect time. Students are just back. They're just starting again. All the, there are no real holidays to take people away, so this is a perfect time to do the survey.
So procedurally, will be an action taken here at the city council?
I would imagine we would have a work, we'd probably have a work session.
And that would probably be prior to the next city council meeting, I would assume, if you need to get it out by the end of January. You think?
Or it could be prior to the next council meeting or after the next council, immediately after the next council meeting, something within that timeframe, as long as we can get out by the end of January.
Council meeting's on the 21st, so that's 10 days.
So the citizens have an idea then, a rough timeframe. If they have something they wanna bring forward to a council member, they'll probably be able to do it, you know?
Tomorrow.
Right away. All right.
So my comment would be to our citizens, if there's something you'd like for us to consider putting on the survey, that you contact your council rep or myself, and let us know what question it is and why you think it's valid, important, and we'll certainly consider that as a body. I think just as important, even more important, when you receive that survey in the mail or you're called on the phone or is email a possibility, Jim?
Yes.
Then answer the survey. Don't blow it off. Don't put it in a stack and forget about it. We need your information. We need your input. So take the time to fill that in and participate. Before Mr. Jackson comes up here, I just wanna make some comments about Health Plus. So, Ms. Richardson, you and Jim correct me on some of this timetable, but over the last couple of years, we have gone through a pretty lengthy process with a consultant to create a Parks and Rec master plan that we paid a consultant to come in and assist the city with. We had a lot of citizen involvement. We asked for priorities. We asked for input. Part of that process is we took into account the inventory of facilities that we have in the city that our citizens use, either private or public. And so we took all that into account. We listened to our citizens, and then we made, we made a priority list, a five-year plan that we've committed $40 million of the taxpayers' money to improve the Parks and Rec facilities of our community. I would have to believe when all those determinations and thoughts were going forth that Health Plus was sitting there as something that was a known entity to us, that it had facilities for exercise and weightlifting and group fitness and swimming pools. And that was part of our consideration as to what we needed to do, and what, and it was part of the consideration from the citizens to tell us what they wanted in their city. And my guess is most people thought that that was their place, and they were content. And so here we are in year one, beginning the process of building some of these new facilities, and the game has changed on us. And so that's, I just want y'all to understand where we're coming from and our planning and what we're dealing with as a community, trying to be responsive to the people who hire us to come up here and make these determinations on your behalf, that we have gone to a pretty lengthy effort to try to listen to you and try to glean from you what your desire is for how you want your city to function in the future. And so we'll go back and we'll talk to them about this, and I have no idea what their reaction is. This is their facility. They're a private entity. They own it. I do believe they'll take our phone call. Health Plus, on a personal level, I mean, it's a place that I spoke of at my dad's funeral. I mean, he lived there for three hours a day, three or four days a week. His community was there. If he was still here today, he'd be sitting with y'all, and he'd be chewing me out, telling me to do something about it. He loved that place and loved the people that he worked out with and he saw at his time there. And so on a personal level, it's a very meaningful place to me, and I'm sorry for all of y'all because it's more than just a place to exercise. I know it's a place that you smile at people and keep up with people, and you receive energy from and friendships from. So it's, I think it's a great loss for our community that it's gonna be gone. I just wanted to say that. Mr. Jackson, your turn.
I'll be Jackson, 814 North College. I would first wanna say that I visited Health Plus because of my former athlete, and I'm down with the seniors because I'm a senior. I have knee problems sometimes, and even though I have to bend down on my knees to be able to exercise in that four-foot pool, it's a very lovely place. And I wanna say to you guys that having somewhat of a little bit of an inside scoop on what's happening, I have friends that are on the board at the hospital, and they are considering keeping just the pool. So once Ron makes that phone call in the morning, I hope that I am as right as my friends tell me it is. So, but I didn't come to address that particular issue. I came to address the issue that has been an issue for quite some time, and that is the Richland Road issue. I met with Ron. I met with three or four other council people out there, city manager, Allison Frazier. I am here to find out what happened to our plan to do something about that side of Richland Road. There's a mid-block crossing there that goes nowhere, where if you're coming onto Richland Road off of Shug Jordan Parkway, coming up, making that sharp sweep of a turn, and a kid is coming across that road, you won't see that kid unless he's my height. So you could easily wipe out a kid or do some bodily injuries to that kid when you come off of Dunford Drive because the city acquired the right-of-way. And at that time, I was a sportsman for the church there. But since that time, we've had our differences, and nothing has been done. There is a hill that, just a tremendous slope, about something I guess would say, it's about an 8 and 12 or something in the construction world. It just drops off. Erosion is taking place. Mud, other silk and everything washes out in the street. If you have to stop suddenly for someone that's coming off of Dunford Drive, and then if there's something in the road, if that person can't see because of that hill that was supposedly going to be tapered down, that person will get wiped out coming off of Dunford. But this is something that I've talked about for at least a year and a half. But, you know, you get tired of beating a dead horse. I waited for six, eight months for something to happen because so much was going on out there. That's the ugly side of Richland Road if you're coming off of Shug Jordan Parkway. And the church, such a small congregation, a lot in terms of what they need to do on their own. I'd like to just have Allison address, or someone tell me what mayor is going to ever get done there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Buston, do we have an update on that project that we can respond to Mr. Jackson on?
We don't. We have the plan of what we're going to do. We're working with the church, and we will, we will do it.
Is there a timetable on that?
I don't think we have an exact timetable. Do we have?
That falls under Mr. Woody's jurisdiction in the Public Works Department. We're performing the work ourselves. We have a lengthy work schedule. It is on our work program. I do not have a date based on other project priorities. We do them in the order at which they're on the work program, and we're getting much closer to this one, but I don't have a start date until we finish up a few other things. We'll keep the city manager informed, who will let you know when we plan to proceed. But it's absolutely been on the work schedule the entire time since we passed a lengthy agreement with the church not that long ago.
Are we talking to years, six months, two years again?
I'll just say, Mr. Jackson, do we think, do we believe that, as Mr. Jackson does, that there's a significant safety issue?
No.
We do not believe that. Our engineers have told us they do not believe there's a safety issue out there, which I guess would rise to the sense of urgency of the project or?
Correct.
One of the factors, one of the factors.
Well, I would like to say something on that because just being in that area, and I've come through and, you know, giving out signs and stuff like that, that hill is a safety issue. You know, the sidewalk and the other stuff maybe can wait, but the way, if you're coming off?
Dunford.
That is a huge safety issue because my car like to get hit because you have to pull your car all the way out before you can even see what's coming in a certain direction. So it is a big safety issue as far as that hill right there where the church at. You know, we went out there. So that is a safety issue. So I don't see how that was determined. That's not a safety issue because it is, and I've experienced it several times. So I don't know who came up with that determination.
Mr. Buston, can we, can we just get an up, could you and Ms. Crouch just give us, maybe if the council would allow, the staff just to give us an update on when they project that project?
We can, we can get back to you on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But, well, we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, that'd be fine. You'll just get back to us. That'd be fine. All right. Thank you. Sir, anyone else?
Linda Dean, 474 Scott Street. First of all, I know that city council has often has many serious issues to debate and make decisions about. It's not an easy task, what you all do, and I do appreciate it, and I think our citizens do also. Pertaining to the upcoming survey, I also think that what you all could do is include some questions on that survey that are specific to the problems that you all are currently grappling with, as well as have grappled with in the past, to get some genuine feedback from your citizens in a formal survey that is worded correctly. I think this would be immensely useful to you all when you're making decisions. So most of you do have Facebook pages. Why don't you solicit contributions from your citizens? And I know those questions will have to be carefully selected. As Mr. Buston said, there are certain questions that you want to follow the trend on, but they're also questions that are specific to our community. They're our problems. And you all want to feel, I guess, when you vote, that you are representing your constituents. How can you know that unless you gather what you hope is representative input from them? And the survey could be a legitimate instrument for doing this, not just a list of your friends on Facebook saying, well, this is what I think. But I hope that you all will follow through with that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Jan Newton. I live at 728 Cotswold Way, Auburn. I second the need about the safety issue at Shug Jordan and Richland Road, the turning of the hill there. It's very, very dangerous. But my main reason I'm here is about the Health Plus pool and other facilities that are gonna be lacking at the new facility. But first, I wanted to say thank you for your willingness and desire to try to address the situation of a therapeutic pool, at least in the meantime until maybe Auburn can build I wanted to say that not only the seniors or older people need the pool, but also younger people use the pool for whenever they've had an injury and they're rehabbing, or they've had, athletes are doing, you know, having a knee replacement, things like that. The pool is an excellent benefit for that. And the heated pool is 85 to 86 degrees typically, and that's very different from a regular Olympic-sized pool that's general aquatic center because most of those type of athletes like it cooler so they, because they're sweating and they're, you know, they're working out really, really at a different level or different pace. So that's, the therapeutic value is really important of the heated pool. Also, someone mentioned the new facility, smaller facility at the mall that Health Plus is planning. I went over the plans with a couple of the trainers. There's no shower facilities planned, no indoor track, no pool, of course, no group fitness classes because there'll be no dance or aerobic studio or yoga studio, no classes for, and I've been searching around the area for classes for seniors or for people who have injuries or arthritis, fitness classes like the yoga and lighter-level Pilates group classes, things like that. And Health Plus was, you know, fulfilling those needs, but they won't be able to if there's newer facility. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from the council? Do I have a move to adjourn?